Educating, Informing, Serving. TV Keeping Government Honest.
Okay, welcome everyone. Let's get started. And for this Westminster Town Meeting postponed from the beginning of March. And let's give thanks for this weather. If this had been yesterday or the day before, we would not have been able to sit down or hold our papers or anything. So, thank you for coming. Now, if you are a registered voter, please, please sit in the, in front of me here, in front of this table. If you're not a registered voter, please sit over to the left, over by the doughnuts. Now, a couple of little housekeeping things. There are two porta potties over to the right of the, to the north of the Institute here. And you're also welcome to use, Jim says, everyone's welcome, anyone's welcome to use the facilities inside the building as well. And Pauline, any other housekeeping things that we should pay attention to? Okay, great. Let's see, I wanted to begin by acknowledging the service of two people. Toby Young and Russell Hodgkins, both ended their work for the town this spring. And Toby, in numerous capacities, but most recently as a school, as a select board member for decades, I think, has served the town for many, 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 many years, a lifetime practically. And, if not a couple of them, Toby. And Russell has been everything from being on the school board and chair of the school board, to most recently about a decade as town manager. And I just wanted to give them thanks for all that, the years of service. So, thank you. And Toby, I think you, you wanted to acknowledge that, and I, this will give me an excuse to, to let, if you have something to say, please go over to the microphone. This is all through the meeting, just to, in back of Fletcher there, there's this, a microphone. Yeah. Yeah. So Toby, if you...
Well, as a former member of the Select Board, I'd like to say a few words about Russ Hodgkin. Russ truly loved his job, and while there were times that he had difficulty dealing with fellow workers, he accepted an offer to meet with a person several times.
I can't hear you. Go right up to the mic, please.
Okay. Russ tru- tru- is that better? No?
Yes.
Well, she's saying she can't hear. Russ truly loved his job, and while there were times when he had difficulty dealing with fellow workers, he accepted an offer to meet with a person several times to deal with that problem, and came out the other side of it very much improved. During his tenure, he created much envied garbage, a much envied garbage collection program for the town, which is the best in the state. Russ took the bull by the horn and finally got the town hall renovated, and if you haven't been inside, you should be. It took a long time to get started, although it had been planned for many, many years before Russ took the job. Russ had an excellent, excellent ability to get available grants from both state and federal resources. His familiarity with state issues was superb. The law says that a town manager cannot be removed except for cause. There was no cause to remove our town manager, and I'm sorry that circumstances led to his need to resign. We have lost an exceptionally devoted and competent person who loved his job and did it well. Thank you, Russ.
And thank you again, Toby. Okay, now, let's move on to ask if there are any of our representatives to appeal here. Yes, Michelle, would you like to say a few words?
Sure.
Great.
So, hi, everybody. Oh, it's loud. My name is Michelle Boslin. I've been state representative for Westminster, Putney, and Dummerston for the last two years. Our session is wrapping up, will be done probably in two to three weeks, will be done with the legislative session. And I just wanted to give you a tiny little update about some things that we've accomplished, and also some changes that are pending due to some of the work that we did in the last year and a half. One of the things that will impact all of you as residents of Westminster is that we had redistricting happen. And so every 10 years, we do the census, and they look at the numbers in terms of population. And what they found was, we had lost about 17% of our population in our area. And so the districts have been all changed around. So for the last more than 10 years, Putney, Dummerston, and Westminster have been together. But in the next cycle, for the next 10 years, Westminster will be joined with Rockingham and Brookline. That won't actually change things for most of you very much, because you're still residents of Westminster. It will change things, though, in terms of who your other representative will be. Because, as you probably know, Representative Murwicky has been serving as your representative, I believe, for 14 years. And he's going to be in a single-person seat, assuming he wins reelection, which is going to be just Putney and Dummerston. So he will no longer be eligible to run in this district. Because we're joined with Rockingham and Brookline, the other representative could come from Westminster, could come from one of the other two towns. I mean, it's, it's an open election, we don't know who will win. But the candidates will be Westminster, Rockingham, or Brookline. So that will change things a little bit. You will no longer have Representative Murwicky serving the town. But he will be serving until the next group is sworn in, which will be on January 4th. So for the rest of this year, the districting will still maintain the old boundaries. Just a couple quick updates about some things we accomplished in the last year. One of our biggest accomplishments, I think, we just passed out of the House in the last, in the last two weeks, was working on the pension fund. For almost all of my first year, one of the biggest things that I was hearing about was teachers and correctional officers and other state workers were concerned that their pension wasn't stable, and that things were going to change so that they would no longer be secure in their positions after they retired. And it took a long time and a lot of work, but we came up with a pretty good solution. And it looks like everybody, the various parties are pretty content with, with the options that we've presented. The workers are happy with it, the state is putting in some money through ARPA funds, and it looks like we're going to come with a solution that's going to work. That said, it hasn't gone all the way through the Senate, and it hasn't been signed by the governor. So we don't actually know if that's going to be settled or not. There are a number of other things that we've worked on. I actually have a mid-session report that I printed out in hard copy form, which was actually from March, when we would normally have our town meeting. But if you're interested to read that, I've got them with me, or I can set them on the table out there. I'm happy to talk about other things that we've done in the legislature, but I don't want to take all your time right now. So if you have specific interests, definitely look me up, ask me some questions, I'm happy to meet with people afterwards. Thank you.
Thank you, Michelle. And thank you for your work you put in. I believe at this point, the Select Board would like to make a presentation, and I think they've asked Susan Harlow, ex-Select Board person, to make that presentation. Susan?
Hello, I'm Susan Harlow, former member of the Select Board, and, can you hear me? Yes. So on behalf of the Select Board, I want to award the Westminster Citizen of the Year. And this year, it goes to Alma Beals. Is Alma here? Was hoping. Oh, too bad, guess not. But I'll tell you why, she's the Citizen of the Year. Alma is what I would call a quiet hero. She's volunteered many organizations over the years, and you probably know her as a master gardener and naturalist. And she loves the outdoors, flowers, birds in particular, and she was, she writes a column for the Westminster Gazette called Nature Notes. She's also treasurer of the Gazette Board, and she's one of the people who goes to Keene and brings back the Gazette to deliver around town. She's also a member of the Conservation Commission. She was on the Westminster Cares Board, and also she volunteers for the garden tour every year. And this, I had forgotten about, but she and her husband Waldo started the recycling center long before the town of Rockingham took it over. So you can thank Alma and her husband for the origins of our excellent garbage program. She doesn't confine her volunteer activities to Westminster. She now works part-time at the Rockingham Library, which is where she might be right now. She served as secretary for the Bellas Falls Rotary Club. She's a longtime member of the Ascotney Mountain Audubon Society, and she helps with the annual Hock Count on Putney Mountain. She coordinated the Herex Cove Wildlife Festival for many years, if you remember that. And she also worked for the Springfield chapter of the Osher Lifelong Learning Institute. So I think Alma really deserves this award. Thank you, Alma, wherever you are.
Thank you, Susan. Okay, let's see, there's, Jason just pointed out that, Jason Perry, that I should let you know that if you want to vote, you need to register when you come in. Those of you who may have avoided that step and walked in, please make sure that you register over with Patty Marks when you come in. Okay, now, I will begin the main part of the meeting, and I want to start with a tradition that my predecessor Fletcher started some years ago, with an invocation. So let us pause for a moment of silence and reflection. We are gathered together in civil assembly. We gather as a community in the oldest sense of the word. We gather to come together and try to make decisions about what is right, about what is wrong. Let us advocate for our positions, but not at the expense of others. Let us remember there is an immense gap between saying "I am right" and saying "I believe I am right." And that our neighbors with whom we disagree are good people with hopes and dreams as true and as high as ours. And let us always remember that in the end, caring for each other in this community is of far greater importance than any difference we may have. Thank you. We are going to use, run this meeting according to the Robert's Rules of Order, and so I'm going to spend a minute or two just summarizing some of the important parts of that. Robert's Rules is the basic rules of order for this meeting, except where Vermont law takes precedence. An article must be moved and seconded by the body and restated by the moderator before it is under consideration and debate on the article may begin. Articles may have only one associated amendment at a time, and amendments may have only one amendment. After you've spoken once on a particular article, you will not be recognized a second time until all other voters who wish to speak on the issue are given the opportunity to do so. Division of the House can be requested by, has this just gone off?
Sorry?
Has this, there it goes, okay. Division of the House can be requested by one voter before or after a voice vote. State law provides for a paper ballot vote on the request of seven voters. Debate may be cut off by a motion to call the question, a second, and a two-thirds vote to do so. All motions, remarks, and discussion must be addressed to the moderator. If you wish to speak, please line up at the microphone in the middle there, and wait to be recognized, then give your name. State law prohibits consideration of articles that have not been warned. This means you cannot take binding action under the article "other business." Reconsideration of an article is allowed by state law until a point is reached where another article is under consideration. My role as moderator is to help you accomplish the business you intend to do. Please raise your hand and ask questions if you don't understand what is happening. At this time, I ask all those who are not registered voters in the town of Westminster to raise your hand. Unless there is a suspension of rules, you may not speak on articles. So if you are not a registered voter, please raise your hand at this point. Great, thank you. Okay, I also have asked again Ian Proctor to be parliamentarian in case there are some issues that need looking up, or some, some decision as to how to proceed during the meeting. So thank you, Ian. Okay, we'll move on to the articles of the town meeting, and at this point, I'm going to ask the members of the Town Fire District to come forward, the Prudential Committee to come forward, please. Good morning, Katie. I'm good. Hi, Chris. Okay, so Daniel Green is not here, but we have Katie Dearborn and Chris Harlow. And I'll just read these, and you two can choose which one of you wants to move them, I think. Okay, so Article 2, to hear the reports of the Town Fire District Number 3, and to take action thereupon.
I move Article 1.
I, you, yeah, you have to press it for a little bit.
I move Article 1 as printed.
Article 2.
I mean Article 2, sorry.
So when you're not speaking, just press it to mute it, press it again to turn it off.
Again.
I move, hello? Hi, I think it's good. Let me turn it up a little. I move Article 2 as printed.
Okay, thank you, Katie. Any questions about the reports of the Town Fire District? All right, let's see, I think we needed a second, actually, to Katie's motion. So Ian, as Ian Proctor has seconded. And again, any, any questions about the reports that are in your town report? Okay, then I will call for a vote to, to accept these reports into record. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? Great. Article Number 3, to see whether the Town Fire District Number 3 shall authorize and instruct its prudential committee and treasurer to borrow money if necessary to meet current expenses on the credit of the district in anticipation of the collection of taxes and/or the receipt of any state or federal funds.
I make a motion that we move Article 3 as printed.
Katie has moved Article 3. Is there a second? A second? Great. Wait, I'm sorry, and I should, I should ask everyone, when you raise your hand, just to say your name for the, for the minutes. Okay. Thank you. So the motion has been made and seconded, to see whether the Town Fire District Number 3 shall authorize and instruct its prudential committee and treasurer to borrow money if necessary to meet current expenses on the credit of the district in anticipation of the collection of taxes and/or the receipt of any state or federal funds. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye? All those opposed? Great, Article 3 passes. Article 4, to see whether the Town Fire District Number 3 shall authorize and instruct its prudential committee and treasurer to borrow money if necessary to meet current expenses on the credit of the district in anticipation of the collection of taxes and/or the receipt of any state or federal funds. What is your pleasure?
I move Article 4 as written.
Article 4, Chris Harlow has moved Article 4. Is there a second? Second by Patty Whalen. Thank you, Patty. Any discussion? Yes?
Is, is my imagination that Article 4, Article 3?
That's a very good question. We're all on automatic here. Is that true? It appears to be true. We could be here all day doing this. Do you want to withdraw your motion, or do you want to just make it over again?
I will withdraw the motion.
Okay, motion has been withdrawn due to the fact that it has already been passed. Okay, I think we'll move on to Article 5 and see what happens. Article 5, to see if the, hello? Am I on? Article 5, to see if the voters of the Town Fire District Number 3 will raise and appropriate the sum of $299,555 to pay the indebtedness and other general expenses of the district for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2022, and ending June 30, 2023.
I move Article 5 as printed.
Katie Dearborn moves Article 5 as printed. Is there a second? Randy Major seconds. Any discussion? Katie, do you want to say anything about this?
Looks like Chris, Chris has something.
Okay, Chris.
Katie, can you explain the Capital Reserve and where you, where, the Capital Reserve, where you're going to be after the rescue? Oh, what's that?
Yeah, Chris, start over, please.
Can you hear me? Okay, Katie, where will the Capital Reserve be after your initial payment on that rescue?
Yeah, can, can everyone hear me? This, this line, okay, great. So what, what we have in front of us is, last year, we all approved the purchase of a rescue truck. And that purchase was something that was ordered, and unfortunately, because of just the process that things have been going through with COVID, that hasn't been delivered yet. So we have not spent the $100,000 that you all authorized us to last year at town meeting. That money's still sitting in our capital reserve. Our intention is to take $100,000 and to purchase the rescue truck, and also to get a loan for 150. And so you can see in the budget for this next year, we need some money to be able to make that loan payment. When I've analyzed the numbers and I've looked at it, based on the budget that we're providing you this year, we are looking to put $73,000 into our capital reserve. Right now, we have $150,000. 100 out of that 150,000 is going to go to our rescue truck as soon as it's delivered to us. Cole's been working diligently with them, it's just a process of kind of waiting for it to come together. If this budget passes, and we're able to put the $73,150 into our capital reserve, of which $23,150 of that, 73,150, is actually not coming from taxation from all of you, but we discovered that there is a way for us to be given funds from the state, which ultimately comes from the federal government, which is hold harmless and pilot money. Hold harmless and pilot money is basically money in lieu of taxes for Vermont state-owned properties, such as our state police barracks. We don't get any money from them from taxes. But there's a program that the state says, hey, since you're not getting any money from us, we're going to give you money out of this program that we get from the feds. So the problem with that is that it's like any other grant program, it could go away in the blink of an eye. So I may not end up getting, we may not end up getting that pilot money, I believe we will. But if we don't, that means only $50,000 potentially would be going into our capital reserve, not the 73,150. So long-winded answer to you, once we spend that $100,000 on the rescue, if the budget is approved, if we get that pilot money, we will be sitting around $125,000 in our capital reserve as of July 1.
Okay, just knowing the cost of equipment today, I'm going to make a motion for at least, make a motion, I know I can't go to a line item with it, but I'm going to make a motion to increase the budget by 20,000.
So if you, yeah, as...
Hold on a second, Katie. So, so Chris has made a motion to increase this, or made, is making an amendment, I should say, to this motion, to increase the figure 20,000, so it would be up to $319,550. Okay, and is there a second to that?
Yes.
What is your name back there?
June Streeter.
June, hi, June Streeter, seconded by June Streeter. Yes, please walk to the microphone.
Hi, this is Kathy Kingston. I just want to know what you want the additional 20,000 for.
I know I can't increase a line item, but I can?
Yeah, it's only the school budget you can.
Well, if I can, I want that money earmarked to the Capital Reserve Fund for future equipment costs. I think everybody knows, prices are going out of this world. We do have, what I see and what I remember, is some good equipment, but a lot of it's aged. So let's be realistic here. If we don't do this, and Cole has an issue with one of his pieces, we'll be looking at a loan. So I'd like to allocate this money to the Capital Reserve.
Thank you, Chris. And Mr. Rickberg.
Bob Rickberg, that sounds like an amendment to the amendment, but what I wanted to say was just, I think the firemen know how much they need, so why don't we just trust them on it?
Thank you. Any further discussion?
Charlotte Gifford, could I query the Prudential Committee, is the hold harmless money assured for this coming year, or is it a question?
It's always a question. I mean, the town's in the same situation. I don't know if everyone realizes, but we always have gotten hold harmless and pilot money. I don't believe that the town budgets necessarily for it, I'm not, I haven't dug in, I've been so focused on the financials for the fire department, but it is not a guarantee. And so I made sure that our budget that we were asking for, which is, you know, the full figure, but really the 299,550 was enough to float our figure, but really the $299,550 was enough to float our bills. The extra that's coming from hold harmless and pilot was going to go into capital reserve to help us build for exactly what Chris Hackett is talking about. I mean, we have an engine purchase that's going to have to happen, you know, in today's world, $750,000 maybe, but five years out, seven years out, we could be looking at $900,000. So we need to be mindful of making sure that we're putting money into that capital reserve, and so the thought process was that hold harmless and pilot money would help us build that account a little quicker.
I understand, but I don't think that intent was clear. If we've received it in the past and not included it in the budget, but this time, what I hear you saying is that we're being prudent and saying, we probably will get this, we're not going to spend it now because we don't know we're going to get it, but when and if we get it, we'll put it into the reserves. Is that correct?
So I guess what I want to clarify is, we have never received the hold harmless and pilot money until this fiscal year. And we didn't know when we approved the budget for this fiscal year that we're in, that we were going to be able to get the hold harmless and pilot money. I worked diligently with the state, I had to work with the town's attorneys, I had to work with the select board. The long and the short of it is, the town has been getting the fire district's hold harmless and pilot money, and it's been going into their general budget. The way that the program works is derived from what your tax rate is. When we send our grant list to the state of Vermont, we give them the tax rate for not just the town, but also the district. When they receive it, they provide hold harmless and pilot money, but they send one check to the town, and the town's been putting it into their general fund. That isn't a real problem, because we're all taxpayers, we're all paying the taxes in order to make these budgets work. What we wanted to show was that we have our own tax rate, and so that we should be showing that we're getting that hold harmless and pilot money, and that's important for lots of reasons. Number one is transparency. Number two, if we apply for any kind of grant, it's really helpful to show that it's not just taxpayer money coming in, but there's another arm of funding that's coming in from a source such as the hold harmless and the pilot. So this is the very first fiscal year that you will see financials that show that we've received the hold harmless and pilot money, but what I want everyone to know is that wasn't extra money to us, we reduced our tax payment from the town by the amount of the hold harmless and the pilot money. We didn't get extra money out of it, and we didn't want to short the town and create a shortage with their budget in having to kick that over to us in addition to the regular tax payment.
So again, I just want to stress, I hear you saying that you're trying to get that into reserves for future reference. That, I believe, was the intent of the motion, and that's why I am inclined to not support the amendment, because it would be doubling it, and if we did need 20,000-something extra in the budget, that should have been part of the budgeting process, not an amendment from the floor, in my view. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Charlotte, any other questions? If you'd like to, sure.
So I guess what I do want to point out is, I think there is a very large expense that's going to come at the fire department, probably seven years out. It might be five years out. That's the engine. An engine's going to cost $900,000. I think the taxpayer that's looking to increase our capital reserve by 20,000 is trying to lessen the blow to the taxpayers at any given point between now and then. We are going to have to fund a engine, there's no question. How we're going to do that is by trying to get this capital reserve, you know, up as high as we can. We have a tendency to be very conservative on the prudential committee, the numbers always have been. The fire department does a fantastic job. I'll be honest with you, I'm in favor of increasing that capital reserve, but I also want to have some participation from taxpayers, which is what the taxpayer, Chris Hackett, that came, so I appreciate it. I personally would support an increase of our capital reserve by the 20,000 for a total budget of the $319,550, if that helps any taxpayers in taking their decision.
Thank you, Katie. Any more discussion on this amendment? Okay, so there is no more discussion. We will vote on whether or not to increase this figure, but we will vote on the amendment, which is to increase the figure from $299,550 to $319,550. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, nay? By my ears, the ayes have it. So unless there is disagreement, the amendment carries. And that means that we will be voting, Article Five now reads, "To see if the voters of the Town Fire District Number Three will raise and appropriate the sum of $319,550 to pay the indebtedness and other general expenses of the district for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2022, and ending June 30, 2023." Is there any discussion, further discussion on this motion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed say nay? And the motion carries. Thank you. Article Six.
I move Article Six as written.
Well, I should read, actually, read Article Six, because that will clarify things. Article Six, "To transact any other business proper to be bought before the Town Fire District Number Three meeting." Is there any other business?
Now I will move Article Six as warned.
I think this is not an article we will be voting on, but only if it gives us an opportunity, if anyone has a further motion or a question for the prudential committee at the time. Yes?
John E. Wald, Westminster West, can you explain, I guess there's a new generator that you're getting, and just let the taxpayers know about it, and maybe how you got the funds for it?
Yeah, perfect. I was actually going to bring that up, so I appreciate it. So I may have Cole speak a little bit to this, but I think everyone's aware that there's some ARPA money that has been available to the town of Westminster. There's a great committee that's been working on trying to how to distribute it and get ideas, and so Cole worked directly with that committee in order to secure some funds so that we could purchase a generator. Cole, do you want to talk a little about it?
So our generator that we were using at the firehouse was one that came through emergency management. We fought with that for the last year, year and a half. It's been out of service, in service, it's now out of service again. Being an older unit, it just, we can't get parts. We've thrown parts at it, and we're done doing that. So we went after the ARPA committee to replace that generator. The generator is at the firehouse, it's not installed yet. Presently, we have a smaller unit that we're using temporarily, but we did get that generator, is at the firehouse, and just needs to be hooked up. That do it?
Thank you, Cole. Any other business? Okay, Patty. Oh, I'm sorry. Mary, Mary Shabatskoy.
It's Mary Shabatskoy. I just had a question about the famous Article Four, and I'd like to make sure that that didn't get actually, that there's not a missing article. In other words, that Three wasn't duplicated in place of an Article Four that should have been there, and I'd just like to point out, maybe somebody should check.
Good question. I think these are the people we should check with, the prudential committee.
Yeah, so unfortunately, I think when the information just went over to the town office, it was a duplicated article. We didn't have any other business other than to get our budget approved. There was no special articles that were coming before you. Thank you, though, I appreciate it.
Okay, and then Patty.
Thank you. I just wanted to talk a little bit about Katie's comment about process, because it's something I really care quite a bit about. I think when she talked about the amendment needing to come before us for the voters to vote on that and be part of the process, I want to go back to actually why we're here and what is the work of the prudential committee, which is very much coming up with a budget that meets your needs. I have, I don't know how long, 40 years I've been attending town meeting, I don't ever remember the fire department's budget being turned down. Certainly, there were questions about equipment purchases and things like that, but I think the town really trusts the work of the fire department. And what we do is expect you to come to us with what your needs are, and we'll vote on that, and hopefully support you. So I just, it's not time to go back and question that amendment, and I'm fine with it, but I do want to point out that we are actually here as voters to approve the work that you've done. There's no need for a second process there unless there's, you know, an important issue that an amendment needs to address. And I don't think that that should necessarily be a budget question. Thank you.
Thank you, Patty. Okay, and any further business before the prudential committee? Thank you, Chris, thank you, Katie, thank you, Cole. And I'll, at this point, ask the select board members to come forward.
I'm going to change this so we're not charging this much. Well, now we've got this fuel going up, diesel fuel is going up like that, and I'm afraid we won't have the money for it today that's going. I just get very, very worried about us having enough money in the fire department.
I was hoping you would speak. Okay, welcome, Select Board. We have Craig Allen, Katrina Hamilton, Kevin Hughes, and Jason Perry here. And we'll begin with Article Seven, to hear the reports of the town officers and take action thereupon on April 30, 2022. This is not a article that we'll be voting on, but it gives the Select Board or anybody else an opportunity to inquire about the substance of the reports. Select Board members, do you have anything to offer here? No. Okay. Looks like Bob Wickburg is...
There has been business of which we are all aware that would render some of the information that's on page five of the report obsolete, so I was wondering if you would comment on if there's any progress being made toward... Sorry, is there any progress being made toward getting a fifth selectman, and what's the situation with the town treasurer?
Okay, so the Select Board has been queried about replacing, finding a new Select Board member and what the status is of that, and also what the status is of the town treasurer, the town treasurer having resigned earlier this season. Okay, Jason, do you have, as Select Board Chair, do you have anything to say in this?
Are we good? As far as board member, we advertised for that position, I think at the end of the 29th. We honestly have not looked at all of them, I think there's probably six or eight interested parties, but we needed to get through today's meeting, and that will be on our list for sure. As far as treasurer, Paul did resign, and we thank him for the years that he served. We have a treasurer right now, Cassandra Pedego, who is here in the back, and we have Ally doing, assisting in that role, so that's all I have.
Thank you, Jason. And I was at the Select Board meeting on Wednesday where they voted to essentially appoint Cassandra Pedego as interim town treasurer until the next town meeting election, next March. Okay, any further questions? Let's move on to Article Eight, and Kevin, well, let me read that. Article Eight reads, "Shall the voters of the town of Westminster authorize total general fund expenditures for operating expenses of $2,500,665, of which $1,913,785 shall be raised by taxes, and $586,880 by estimated revenue for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2022, and ending June 30, 2023?" What is your pleasure, Kevin?
I leave the article as written.
Is there a second? Seconded by Isaac? By Fletcher? Fletcher. The article has been made second, and it reads, "Shall the voters of the town of Westminster authorize total general fund expenditures for operating expenses of $2,500,665, of which $1,913,785 shall be raised by taxes, and $586,880 by estimated revenue for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2022, and ending June 30, 2023?" Any discussion? Yes, in back, please, please go to the microphone and state your name.
Hello, I'm Cassandra Pedego, your new treasurer. My question is about the amount being raised by taxes. We haven't actually ever received that much in delinquent taxes, so I'm wondering why we're estimating that we might receive more this year than we did the last two years.
Any response from the Select Board?
Hi. Estimated revenue doesn't just include delinquent taxes.
So I'm looking back here.
It's not my job to answer this question, I was just talking to Rebecca, but...
Now, can you show me that line item, because on delinquent taxes, we estimated this year 80, and we've been, the prior year, we did 166. We haven't finished this year, so that 50 means nothing.
So the 1.9 that we shall raise from taxes?
Yeah.
So I'm asking about the 1.9. We are, our actual numbers for '20 and '21 were less than 1.9.
That was the history, now we're going into the next year, which would be the 23rd we're asking for more money.
So are we expecting that that is going to, that we're going to have $200,000 more this year than we did the last?
We're asking property taxes, $1,900,000, that's our property taxes. We're going to ask for $2,430,000, but we were, if you look at it, that's the revenue page, you're correct. The taxes that we're asking the voters today is 1.9 million, okay? The 80 is income coming in. Now, in the past, that 80 has been really a low number, it always is, so we end up with, let's say, the $166,000, we'd end up with another 80,000 that we were, that ends up being part of the surplus we could have a year on it. And that's told, but in property taxes today that we'd be asking is 1.9, where last year we asked for 1.7.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Craig. Any other questions? Yes?
John, Greg, so just if I'm doing the math right, it looks like the budget is going up by 8%, and the amount to be raised in taxes is going up by, is going up by 8.8%. But it looks like also on page seven, it says that our rainy day funds or our fund balance has actually increased a bit. What's driving the budget increase? It looked like there was two... the tax rate itself and what that might be.
John, on the fuel, that's for fuel tank replacements. The tanks in the ground there need to come out, and that's where that increase is. And obviously, we know what fuel's doing right now, so a large chunk of that, I don't know that number off the top of my head, but was for fuel tank replacement.
But do you anticipate using some of the, if the fund balance is increased, are you going to draw some of that, or is the amount that you're going to raise in taxes from us going to increase by 8.8%?
Yes. Yeah, it's like 8.75 that we're asking for property taxes. Lots got to do with, we had over a million dollar flood this last year, heavy rain and everything, when we were trying to recover from it. And the bottom line, we still anticipate revenue coming in from FEMA, but we can't count on it. So the only way we can actually balance the books out was just plain ask for more money. Hopefully, it will level off, and hopefully next year we'll be in better shape.
Okay. And then, and I realize the common level of appraisal is really more to the school budget, but it indicates that it's only 91%, which I think means that we're not reflecting the real values of the property. So are, is there likely to be a property revaluation coming up soon?
No, that number, it was in, was in line with what they anticipated. It wasn't until you get, I think, around 86, 87% that we actually didn't have to have it. Tuned what would happen in the growth that we saw, the state was fine with it. So right now it's not on schedule. It was, it was actually better than what I thought we were going to be.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Any other questions? Mr. Wickburg?
After this article, we have one, two, three, four, five, six special articles where various organizations are asking for appropriations. And I was wondering whether those appropriations are included in the figure that we're discussing now. It appears like it is when I read the expenditure budget. Like, for instance, page, I think it's 16, at the bottom, I see the Westminster West Library goes from $8,400 this year, last year, to 15,400 this year, which is an increase of $7,000, which is what's being asked for in, which one is the Westminster, in Article 14. It seems to me that we ought to do the special ones first and consider the general budget later, but at least let's know what it is we're voting on.
Interesting point, Bob. Any response from the Select Board?
We've discussed this every year. We have a hard time with this. And one, it cost our voters a lot of money because we've sent the tax bill out, we didn't include all the articles. But maybe Fletcher could talk a little more on it, but it seems like we have to do this one first, and then we add articles, and then at the end, we seem to have to go in and adjust that rate and tell everybody what it is. We tried to come as close as we can, but we discussed it this year, but we still stayed with the same system.
Fletcher, do you have anything to add to this?
Well, the history was that we were trying to have the first article just get the base operation taken care of, and then that all the, all the specials would get tacked on. But Bob's got a pretty good point. That 7,000 bucks for the library sort of jumps off the page. I haven't, I haven't looked at, tracked down all the other articles, but leaves me wondering whether they're already built into the, into the figure that we're looking at now, the 2.5 million. It looks like the West Library number is in there, so raises a question whether the others... If that happened, then the basic idea of funding, of funding your base operation in the first article, so you know you've got that nailed down, is a little shaky right now. But I don't know. Have we got somebody who knows the numbers better than me can parse that?
What I'm understanding is the first article should be just the basic operating needs, and then any additional article would be added on top of that at the will of the voters. Is that correct? Fletcher?
Yeah, that was what was recommended to me at the League of Cities and Towns meetings that I used to go to, because basically so that you know you've got your base operation covered. And if the special articles come up and you're, you're, you start getting shot to tatters by the meeting on that, at least you know you've got your base operation funded.
Right. Makes sense. Does, has, has anyone, has anyone here gone through these figures enough to know whether or not, or which of the following articles are, are included or not included?
I haven't done them all, but I just found the Butterfield Library, that's also on page 16, and the FY '22 proposed budget is $7,500. Now, that is not a $7,500 increase over last year, the way the Westminster West Library is. So it seems like one procedure was used for the Butterfield Library and another one was used for the West West Library, which is why I'm all confused. Are the monies that are being asked for in the special articles in addition to what's already shown in the budget? Or are they in there or are they not? You know, it's, it's just, I don't know.
You raise a good question, and when we did this, you know, Russ was here, and we did it quite a while ago, and we had a discussion. And some of these, they had come to us, and we had already put, put some of the, in our budget. And then at the minute, they had, some of them came back and asked for an article. I know we discussed it, and I'm embarrassed to tell you, I'm not 100% sure that that 1.9 doesn't have some of those articles in them, but the tent of the board, it wasn't. The tent was that we would add, as these articles pass, we would add them to that 1.9.
Yes, Charlotte Gifford.
Point of order. If that is correct, and there is an error in the Westminster West Library fund, and we pass Article 14, is it the case that that would add $14,000? Well, in that answer, I'd like to make a motion.
My belief is that is true, Charlotte. If, if the money were already included in the, in Article 8, and we voted a supplementary fund in a, in a following article, the money would be essentially doubled.
So there are, I believe, five special articles, if I've counted correctly. I'm not sure if this motion is in order, but I'm going to try. I move that the Board of Selectmen now, on the spot, find those five items and determine whether those special article monies are in there or not, because my motion would be to strip them from the budget, from the main motion, to follow the best practice that Fletcher has outlined. But I don't think it falls to the taxpayers one by one for us to find them, but rather the people who are most familiar with the budget to find it. So that's my motion.
Okay. And I'm going to have to have a discussion with my parliamentarian here about, we've got a...
Let me try to simplify it, then.
Yes.
I move that we strip from the budget any duplicative sums from the additional special warranted items from this current article.
Okay. So you have an amendment to the main motion?
Correct.
Which would remove any of the monies that appear in the following special articles?
And if there's a second, I will speak to it.
Is there a second to Charlotte's? Yes. Adrian Major is seconded.
I would ask that you support this motion because I believe it follows both the intent of the Select Board and best practice. I will add only a commentary. I wish Russ were here to sort this out.
Okay. Thank you, Charlotte. Any discussion on the amendment? Mr. Major?
Stephen Major. Just noting that as we start counting these up, Sevins is not in the current budget. So we can just look for the, those items in our proposed expenditure budget. We've already got three or four of them down. We've got the Butterfield Library, the Westminster West Library, and Sevins that we know. The Westminster West Library was included. Butterfield Library was not included. Sevins was not included. We don't have that much more due, so we can probably do what Charlotte says.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Major. Hi, Ms. Proctor.
I think the, I think actually the Butterfield Library, although it appears in the regular budget, that the article is duplicative because, I think it's because they changed the amount of their funding. If you look at the, and if, if you change the amount of your funding, you have to repetition and get a special article. So I think Butterfield also has both been built into the budget and had a special article. The only reason it's in the, it's a separate number from last year, that's right, the...
Zero. Butterfield Library, zero.
No, no, it was 5,900 bucks.
Opposed.
Okay. If it's zero, then I'm good. Last year, okay.
I think we're good on Butterfield.
I'm going to say, I don't, I can't find any that we duplicate it, to be honest with you, on it.
You know what? I, I got to apologize because what I was looking at was the fiscal '22 budget where it is in it. But in fact, it is not in the fiscal '23 budget. So I think I just stirred a hornet's nest accidentally, but I don't think that's right. I honestly think you were doing the right thing, and if you just said that right from the beginning, we might have avoided all this. I, I think we should just do away with...
It was nice to hear apology.
Okay. Sorry.
Thanks, Bob.
Thank you, Bob. We're just on our toes.
Those are in the minutes, too, Bob, okay?
Nevertheless, we have an amendment on to the motion on the floor. Any further discussion on the amendment, which is to ask the Select Board to go through and see whether there's any of these duplicated funds in the main motion?
Technically, the motion was to strip them, not to have them, look for them. But as the maker of the motion, I declined to withdraw it until the Select Board points us one by one to where these are. I'd like for the body to see this, please. If you could give us page numbers, et cetera, that would really be helpful. Bob referred to it. I couldn't catch it because I can't hear, and I'll implore the body, please, one inch in front of the mic. That's what you have to do. Thank you.
Thank you, Charlotte. And the wind is interfering a little bit with the hearing. But the, so there is a amendment on the floor. Any further discussion on the amendment? The amendment is to ask the, to request that the Select Board strip any of the, potentially duplicated funds from the Article 8. Any, Mary, any further, any further discussion? All those in favor of the amendment say aye. All those opposed? The nays appear to have it. So I declare that the amendment has failed, and we'll go on to Article 8, which reads, "Shall the voters of the town of Westminster authorize total general fund expenditures for operating expenses of $2,50665, of which $1,913,785 shall be raised by taxes, and $586,880 by estimated revenue for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2022, and ending June 30, 2023?" What is your pleasure? Any further questions? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. All those opposed say nay. The ayes have it, and the motion carries. Moving on to Article 9. Shall the voters of the town of Westminster raise and appropriate the sum of $15,000 for the Bridge Rehabilitation Reserve Fund established by Article 17 at the annual meeting of March 2, 2010? What is your pleasure, Select Board? Jason?
I move Article 9 as written.
Jason Perry moves Article 9 as written. Shall the voters of the town of Westminster raise and appropriate the sum of $15,000 for the Bridge Rehabilitation Reserve Fund established by Article 17 at the annual meeting of March 2, 2010? Any discussion? Oh, is there a second? I'm sorry, is there a second? Isaac Proctor has seconded. Any, any discussion? Susan?
Susan Harlow, I just want to make the comment that we're going to have to pay a lot for bridges in the future. The Westminster West Bridge is going to cost us quite a bit, and our bridge fund is not adequate at this point. So we definitely should vote for the 15,000, and probably in the future, we're going to have to put more in. Thank you.
Thank you, Susan. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in, the motion reads, "Shall the voters of the town of Westminster raise and appropriate the sum of $15,000 for the Bridge Rehabilitation Reserve Fund established by Article 17 at the annual meeting of March 2, 2010, Article 9." All those in favor say aye. All those opposed? The motion carries, and we move on to Article 10. What is your pleasure, Kevin? I'll just read it. Shall the voters of the town of Westminster authorize the sum of $350,000 to be applied from the fiscal year 2021 to 2022, general fund surplus to pay the indebtedness of the July 29, 2021 storm event? Kevin?
I move the article as written.
Kevin moves the article as written. Is there a second? Yes. Kathy Kingston. Seconded by Kathy Kingston. All the motions that have been made and seconded. Shall the voters of the town of Westminster authorize the sum of $350,000 to be applied from the fiscal year 2021 to 2022, general fund surplus to pay the indebtedness of the July 29, 2021 storm event? Mr. Major?
So sometimes a general fund surplus goes to reduce the taxes. Sounds like we had to pay a lot of money for that storm event. And so this is essentially, instead of reducing the tax rate, this money has been spent for repairing our roads after that storm. I just wanted to query whether that is correct.
That's correct.
Good.
Okay. Any further discussion? The motion reads, "Shall the voters of the town of Westminster authorize the sum of $350,000 to be applied for the fiscal year 2021, 2022, general fund surplus to pay the indebtedness of the July 29, 2021 storm event?" All those in favor say aye. All is opposed? Motion carries. We move on to Article 11. Shall the voters of the town of Westminster raise and appropriate the sum of $7,500 to support the cost of operation and maintenance of the Westminster Institute and Butterfield Library? What is your pleasure? Katrina?
I move the article as written.
Katrina moves the article as written. Again, "Shall the voters of the town of Westminster raise and appropriate the sum of $7,500 to support the cost of operation and maintenance of the Westminster Institute and Butterfield Library?" Any discussion? And first, perhaps I'll ask Jim Mato to come forward to explain. Jesse, would you mind just pausing a second and allow Jim to...
Thank you, Jim Mato. I'm currently serving as Chair, currently serving as Chair of the Institute and Library. Yeah, the, the earlier discussion was correct that in the fiscal '23 budget that was just passed, the amount for the Butterfield Library is zero. And as Fletcher pointed out, this would be, this is actually the fourth year that we make a request. We learned the hard way that if you change it, you've got to, you've got to do it three years, approved, before it goes in the Select Board budget. Changing it after year one is something I... Changing it after year one is something I remain sorry for today, but that's what happened. And this is our third year, so it adds, that $7,500 gets added to the zero that's in there now. And the only other thing, normally at this point, I would say a few things about comparing the years and everything else. Well, '20 and '21 were pretty odd years for anything, particularly when you close it, which we did in '20 for quite a while. But the library part of it opened up, first just for curbside pickup of books, and then opened up for patrons to come in, and I think it was in July. Other activities in the Institute didn't really begin until this calendar year, but we're kind of back to normal now. We've added the Saturday hours in response to people's requests to open at times when they weren't working, and then that's been well received and starting to pick up a lot. Just in the last four or six weeks, we've had, I think, two or, at least two, maybe three birthday parties, a baby shower, a 50th wedding anniversary, a bunch of things have gone on. So that's coming back to normal, and we're feeling, feeling really happy about that. And just, the only other thing I would say at this point is look forward, in the future, we're going to be looking for other things we can do that would serve the general public and what people want a little better. So watch for a survey, and don't ever hesitate to just tell us if you see something you think should change. And any other questions, I'll do my best. Thanks.
Thank you, Jim. Jesse, or Bob Whitberg?
Jesse seems to have walked off. I'd be happy to defer to her, but I had two questions. One, does the Westminster Institute publish an annual financial report so that the voters of the town of Westminster could have an idea of what your total budget is, and what percentage this is of that, et cetera, et cetera? That's the first question.
The answer is, we have a year-end report that we don't publish, actually. That's a good idea, and probably we should do that. I can tell you right now that our budget for the, which will be passed in May by our board, but for the year, our fiscal year begins on June 1st. I'm not sure why, but it does. And the total budget for the, for that year is $95,182, of which $28,505 is direct library expenses. And I use the word "direct" because that's salaries, books, magazines, library equipment. We just bought, this year, we bought a printer and two computers, payroll, payroll taxes, et cetera. That $28,000 does not include things that I don't know how to split out, like how much of the heat and lights go to the library, or the insurance that we have to buy, which is pretty expensive, and building maintenance, et cetera. So the answer is that the $7,500 goes into the overall budget for the Westminster Institute and Butterfield Library. The overall budget is $95,000 for the upcoming fiscal year, and the direct library expenses are $28,500. And I've got a lot of other details here, but, so if any have other questions. And I think we, excuse me. I think we should publish a report somewhere for that, and thank you for the idea.
I'll agree with that statement. The second question is much more specific, which is, how much does the Institute pay for internet service, and do you apply for federal E-rate funds, which would offset the vast majority of those costs?
We, until the COVID pandemic and a need for using Zoom for a lot of meetings, we had a free line that Comcast put in when they came into town, which was good for email and not much more. And we upgraded that to a higher, higher level service that will support Zoom and other internet use, and added the, outside here, if you want to get on the internet, you use something called the Westminster Hotspot, which is that box next to the door, and that covers the whole ball field. And, but the answer to your question is, we now pay $99 and change a month, and I didn't know about another cheaper rate we'd be eligible for, and I would be happy to learn more about that. Thanks.
Heels would like to make a comment.
Yes, hello? Hello? How about that? Try this, try this.
I guess someone's sending me a message.
Hey, Kevin, mine works.
Last chance. Thank you, everyone, for being here, too. Jim, I just want to point this out, Jim's a really modest guy. You'll see in your booklet that on page 39, both Jim and Lucy are recognized as Westminster-on-herdies. And right now, you know, the work he does that we all don't see is tireless. He doesn't get paid for it. Since I've been involved with the Institute, he's assisted by Dave Murray and Jim Graut, also tirelessly, and newer members, Teen Reed's been unbelievable, and we're very lucky to have Sue Harlow, who we dragged in also. Jim does such an amount of work to keep the building looking as beautiful as it does. He does it without pay. His leadership and his experience is tremendous, and he's not, he doesn't like us talking like this about him. But, you know, the money that's being asked for is coming, not for just the improvements that the building has needed over the years, but also for the evolution to keep it as a major part of our town. I mean, we're sitting here in this beautiful venue because of the dedication of these people. I just wanted to let you guys know that, that money is very important, and I, it wouldn't be being added if it wasn't important and critical to the long-term strategic planning of the Institute, which Jim and the people I've mentioned are spearheading. And they are working very hard to find additional sources, and they have. Some of them like to remain anonymous, but they, they work tirelessly to get additional donations. So just as a member of the board, and having had the privilege of serving all of you for the last four years, you know, just wanted to let you guys know that Jim, there's not a day that he's not down there. So, thank you.
Yes, thank you, Mettles. There's a, there's a picture of them you might have noticed in the town report right after the July 29 storm event. Okay, um, we are at Article 11, and any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of Article 11, which reads, "Shall the voters of the town of Westminster raise and appropriate the sum of $7,500 to support the cost of operation and maintenance of the Westminster Institute and Butterfield Library?" All those in favor say aye? All is opposed, nay? The motion carries. Thank you, and thank you, Jim. Article 12 reads, "Shall the voters of the town of Westminster raise and appropriate the sum of $25,000 as a one-time contribution to partially defray the cost to replace the elevator at the Westminster Institute?" Katrina?
I move the article as written.
Katrina moves Article 12. "Shall the voters of the town of Westminster raise and appropriate the sum of $25,000 as a one-time contribution to partially defray the cost to replace the elevator at the Westminster Institute?" Jim, would you like to speak to this as well?
Thank you. The honest answer is no, but we will. The, a year ago, we told you we were getting ready to replace the elevator, and the main issue we had at the time was that the elevator shaft, which was built to fit nicely into a historic building without disrupting any of the historic nature, at least minimally disrupting any of the historic nature of the building, does not meet today's codes. And a new elevator would require the shaft to be removed, basically, and enlarged in all dimensions, height, width, and depth. So to get around that, at an estimated cost of $75,000 to $100,000, we were moving to install it with a lift, technically a mechanical lift, like the one in the town office or the one in the church, but different in the sense that it would have an enclosed cab. That was going to cost $75,000 to $100,000, somewhere in that range. And, but required a variance of state code because that type of machinery was only certified in the code to travel 14 feet vertically, and we needed 22. The machinery itself, the equipment, was designed for 50, and in fact, is used for that in a lot of places, but that's the code here. However, it's been allowed in five places, to our knowledge, in the state, so we proceeded to do that and seek that variance. While the state is unwilling to grant that variance. I'm not sure why, but that's where we ended up after two stabs at it. And so we dropped that, and in the process, learned about a new possibility, a new alternative that I at least wasn't aware of, and none of us knew about this. And that is what is termed in there, in that business, as a modernization of an obsolete piece of equipment, basically replacing all of the components with public building, commercial standard equipment, but still maintaining the original shaft and the original hydraulic cylinders and steel cables, which are in good shape. So we're contracting, we're in contract. We are talking with a new company, and they have spent the last month or so trying to find a supplier who would put together a package to do that. That was not successful largely because the elevator company that built the one we have went out of business quite a long time ago. And parts are, even without the supply chain problems, parts are difficult to find. So they've now taken it on their own to put together that package themselves. It would involve replacing all of the electrical components, modernizing and upgrading the elevator car itself, and basically totally retooling the, but, but not having to replace the shaft, and thereby avoiding that cost, which could have doubled the whole thing, actually. We're still in that $75,000 category. I talked with them on Wednesday, and they confirmed that, but they didn't have specifics or the numbers they needed to give us an actual proposal. $75,000 with a 20% contingency, which is probably not unreasonable, given the nature of the work, would be 75 to 90. We have in hand $42,300 outside of the budget I just mentioned for this project. We originally had $10,000 more than that, which was, has been spent on architectural services and consultations from construction and electrical engineers, and some permit efforts. The permit efforts is money down the tubes, but the other is work that's available and still being used in this potential modernization. The $42,300 that we have in hand, plus the $25,000 that's requested, if that's approved today, would give us a little over $67,000 for a project that's estimated to come in somewhere in the, I think 70 is probably a good number, but they're saying 75, probably to avoid disagreements in the future. I don't know. But the remaining balance could, we could, we could finance that if we had to. We'd have a hard time financing the bigger numbers. But if, with this approved, we would have $67,000 available, which would come close to covering the full cost, and we could, we could manage the difference if need be. I guess that's it. We've, we've been doing things like replacing lights in the library and putting the granite posts out fronts and things, and getting ready for the 100th anniversary of the Institute, which would be in 2024, and July of '24, so it'll be a nicer day, we hope. And so that's where we are with that. Thank you.
I was delinquent in not asking for a second for that motion. So is there a second? By Ian Proctor, a second. Okay. Any further, thank you, Ian. Any further discussion or questions for the Institute? Seeing none, all those in favor of Article 12. "Shall the voters of the town of Westminster raise and appropriate the sum of $25,000 as a one-time contribution to partially defray the cost to replace the elevator in the Westminster Institute?" All those in favor say aye? All is opposed, nay? Motion carries, article carries, and we move on to Article 13. "Shall the voters of the town of Westminster raise and appropriate the sum of $9,534 for, for the support of Southeastern Vermont Economic Development Strategies, SEVETS, to provide workforce and economic coordination services to the Wyndham region?" Kevin, is there a motion?
I move the, I move the order as written. The article is written.
The article has been moved by Kevin. Is there, Article 13, is there a second? Yes, back, wait, Cassandra Pedego, I think, yes. Seconded. Any discussion? I have either Jen or Adam here, I believe, from the SEVETS to speak, if we would like them to do so. Molly, what, Molly Bannock, however, is the microphone first.
I'd love to hear from them. I know we voted this down for the last couple of years, and maybe they got some new and exciting things.
Okay, thank you, Molly. Is this Adam here? Adam, yeah, welcome. Please state your full name and, and explanation for what you'd like to say.
Sure, yes. Hi, thank you, everybody. My name's Adam Granold. I'm a SEVETS board member and, far away? Closer. There we go. My name is Adam Granold. I'm a SEVETS board member and the executive director of the Brattleboro Development Credit Corporation. Appreciate the opportunity to speak here today as a, as a non-resident. I live in Wilmington, and my colleagues and I attend many town meetings across Wyndham County each year, in fact, two today. And it's, it's always a challenge to present the information we do over the course of an entire year in just a few minutes, so I really thank you for your time. Some of that work includes working in all four Wyndham County high schools. So we have a licensed educator who is working with students and helping them find pathways to employment that they may not know existed right here in the region. Many of these folks are college-bound, but many are not, and it's helping them understand those, those opportunities that are right in their back door. We work with municipalities in helping community facilities. We've been doing a lot of work with refugee relocation, connecting those folks with, with housing and opportunity. And we also have a significant, of course, tradition in working directly with businesses, supporting startups, supporting folks to grow and expand, and in some cases, retaining folks here in the region. So, you know, I'll pause there with some of the work we do. Happy to answer any questions. It's often a challenge in this format to be able to speak to everybody, answer questions. Sometimes there's erroneous information out there that we don't really want to get into a debate. Our, our role here is not to convince you. Hopefully, there's, there's folks here in the audience who've connected with the work we do and can speak in favor and help your, your fellow residents understand the value of this investment. We leverage these dollars over and over and over again and put them to work, helping the, the region grow its economy. So I'll pause there. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, Adam. Any further discussion? Molly Bannock. Thank you, Molly. Any further discussion?
I think I'm almost done. So as your representative and the chair of the Bellas Falls Union High School, and been involved in the high school for a lot of years, I just want you to know that we have a nonprofit organization, a gentleman from Saxon River called Mike Stack, who has brought a group of people together, and it, this is nonprofit. It's not costing the school anything, and they are- anything, and they are working very hard to get our local kids involved in trades. And I don't mean just, I don't mean trades as far as contracting electrical plumbing. We've got somebody that got involved in an office job, a young lady that, you know, senior in high school, what do we do? And so we've got her in, you know, and they're working on placing kids and helping kids get into those positions. They're local people, they're in the area, they're going after all the businesses, small and big, to, you know, help the kids that aren't going to go to college get some kind of idea of where they're going to be in the community. And just, I hate it when people repeat themselves and go to tell you that it's costing us nothing. Thank you.
Thank you, Molly. Any further discussion? Yes?
Cynthia Hughes. Hi, everyone. I just wondered if, I have a question for Molly, actually, to tell us a little bit about, you know, is this other program useful? Is this other program useful to the students? Is it reaching other students that maybe the local program isn't? I'm not sure. It just would be nice to know why we vote this down. I'm not real clear about that. So I'm always in favor of programs that help students learn more about employment opportunities and career opportunities. So I guess I'd just like some more information about if we think this is a necessary program or why we don't think it is.
Thank you, Cynthia. And it looks like Mr. Wickberg is taking the microphone.
Well, I can answer your question, or at least to the best of my recollection, there were two reasons that we voted it down last year. One is that fairly consistently, the principal of the high school at the time said he never sees these guys, despite the fact that their annual report says they're working with all the schools. That was one reason. The other reason was, the amount they're asking for is, I think, three dollars per capita, and Brattleboro was only giving them two, and we were just wondering why we should be giving more than per capita than Brattleboro. So those are two of the reasons. There may have been others, but I just wanted to say, let you know, since you asked.
Thank you, Bob. I think that there seems to be a line now, and so if you could just come up and ask to be recognized, Molly Bannock.
So I was queried, but I'm back up here, but I don't know if I have all the answers for you, but I will tell you that, just as Bob said, that was part of the reason why we didn't support it. We have a new principal. I haven't asked him this year if he's getting anything out of it. I do know that, just as Bob said, the other principal hadn't felt he had gotten much out of it. And this, and with this new organization starting up, this gentleman is at meetings and learning all he can learn, and he has some really powerful businessmen that have joined his organization, and I just think that for our little area, that's the best way to go right now. Thank you.
Thank you, Molly. Chris Hackett.
I'm going to query Adam. My understanding is, past couple of years, the sophomore class is brought down to Brattleboro, B.F.U.H.S., and that's part of S.O.V.E.D.'s. Can you explain a little bit about that first?
Adam Grenold.
Thank you, Adam Grenold. Yeah, so there's what's called the Sophomore Summit, which includes sophomores from all four Wyndham County high schools who come together to hear from employers, hear from nonprofit employers, for-profit employers, trades, things that require certification or degrees, to learn what those opportunities are in the region. And that's an event that's been going on for many years. We do, in fact, have the support of the high school, the leadership, and making a request for funding, and continuing partnership with them. This year was very well received. We had numerous events on a monthly basis in the school with the students. So anyone who does not know the level of our engagement is not engaging with the folks who are receiving that, because it's on a weekly basis.
Any further questions?
I just, thank you.
Great.
I've been hearing everybody for the last few years, and I understand everybody's comments and appreciate them. But I'm going to ask, first off, I want to explain, I'm on the Westminster Economic Development Committee, and we're looking for members. And actually, we're looking for members from all across Westminster, including the West. So if you'd like to join us, please let me know. But I think we also need to look at this S.O.V.E.D., this money, from a regional aspect, and also from an aspect of not only our kids, but what economic development is all about. Let me put some words together here, if you don't mind. Economic development and economic sustainment results from both, our results are both tangible and intangible. I ask that we start thinking about ourselves from a regional economy. I can point to one thing I know really, it's near and dear to me, is that fire department over there. Not only they cover the town of Westminster, but these guys are called out regionally, to Keene, to Brattleboro, Saxons River. Our economy is not just Westminster, and that's the point I want to make. S.O.V.E.D., BDCC, has, honestly, if you look around, employees or people today, our tax base, that live here but work outside in other regions of our economy. So as I ask for is, let's start thinking regionally. Let's start thinking, yes, our kids, but also job growth and sustainability. As I look around here, I'm aging out, and I'm hoping we can get the young kids to continue to stay here. Thank you.
John Gray.
I think if you're raising the question of tangible results, I'll note that they're asking for over nine thousand dollars, which is almost as much as we're giving Westminster Cares. It's far more than we give Senior Solutions, which is the Council of Aging, it's far more than we give to the public transit, far more than we give to the Historical Society. There's a page and a half in our minutes from last year about us debating this, where at best, we were going to give them thirty-five hundred dollars, but that was shot down to. The fact that they come back and ask for ninety-five hundred dollars, or whatever it is, suggests to me that they're just not listening to us. I would recommend a no, and I call the question.
John Gray has called the question, which I believe requires a second. And we have a second in the back there. Paul Bannock, hi, Paul. It gets a little hard to recognize people in their sunglasses. Yes, there you are. Okay, so that means that we will be voting on this motion, Article thirteen. Shall the voters of the town, I'm sorry, it means that we will be voting on whether or not to call the question. All those in favor of calling the question, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay.
Nay.
Okay, the question has been called, so we'll move right on to the motion. Shall the voters, Article thirteen, shall the voters of the town of Westminster raise and appropriate the sum of nine thousand five hundred and thirty-four dollars for the support of Southeastern Vermont Economic Development Strategies, S.O.V.E.D., to provide workforce and economic coordination services to the Wyndham region? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. I'm having trouble determining whether the ayes have it or the nays have it. Let's try that one more time. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay.
Nay.
I'm gonna, I think the nays have it, but you know what? I'm going to ask you to stand. It's probably a good idea, anyway. All those in favor, say aye, stand, please stand. Okay, and is there members of the Board of Civil Authority who can count, please? Okay, thank you. And now, please, all who are opposed, stand. Okay, the motion fails. Thirty-four ayes, forty nays. Thank you. So we'll move on to Article fourteen. Shall the voters of the town of Westminster raise and appropriate the sum of seven thousand dollars to the Westminster West Library to join the Catamount Library Network? This will pay for additional hours for the librarian and additional annual costs associated with joining the network. Article fourteen.
I move Article fourteen as written.
Jason has moved Article fourteen as written. Is there anyone from the library who would wish to speak on this, the Westminster West Library? Yes, you will love it. Oh, is that it? Thank you. Do I have a second? Yes, Gerald Charles.
Thank you. Hi, I'm Emily Weinberg.
Emily Weinberg.
It's okay.
Excuse me, Emily.
I'm the board chair at the Westminster West Library. I spoke last year on the same article, and you guys supported us last year. We have great celebration happening next week because we have digitalized our catalog. It does seem unusual that a town has two part-time libraries, where in fact, we do, and both libraries support each other, and being such a large geographical area, having two libraries is effective because they're both offer community spaces. I volunteer a lot at the library. I see lots of people coming through the door, children, job seekers, people wanting to use the computer, the Wi-Fi. Sometimes people are lost, and they even just want to use the phone. But having a library in the cornerstone of each side of the village, both villages, is a huge service, and I really hope everyone uses both of these libraries. I know I do, and I see a lot of library supporters here. We have so many things to offer besides books. Mostly, it's a community space that you can use, and there's a lot of work that goes on behind the scenes with the Butterfield and the West Library, just to pay the bills and the insurance and the payroll and the taxes. And this, by the town supporting us, you guys are helping the West Library meet close to half of our operating expenses, which is about, probably, it's actually kind of the same as the Butterfield Library, we're about twenty-nine thousand dollars of operating expenses. And we seek out a lot of grants, and we have a huge open house. We have an invitation that went out to everybody in the town to kind of bring everyone together. Please come get a library card. Both libraries are now digital. Our library, you can go to our website, there's a button, and you can search books from there. So we're bringing the library into everybody's homes. So we're really proud of the changes we've made, and thank you for your support.
Thank you, Emily. Any questions for Emily or further discussion?
Hi, I'm Lucas Lordich, library patron, and I wanted to already point out that between last year, when you gave us the extra funding, and now, you're actually able to go to the Westminster West Library, go online, order books from anywhere in Vermont and have them show up at the Westminster West Library, pick them up, and then drop them off at the Westminster West Library, all completely free, and all you need is a library card. So that is what we are already able to do. We actually did that last week, and got a full comic book set that would have sent me like two hundred bucks back. So that is now and going forward what you have complete access to at the Westminster West Library.
Thank you, Lucas. Any other discussions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor of Article fourteen, which reads, shall the voters of the town of Westminster raise and appropriate the sum of seven thousand dollars to the Westminster West Library to join the Catamount Library Network? This will pay for additional hours for the librarian and additional annual costs associated with joining the network. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it, and the motion carries. Article fifteen, to transact any other proper business to be brought before the town of Westminster annual meeting. Is there any other business? Mr. Wickberg.
I want to hearken back to something that Toby said. She said, the town hall looks really good, and she wishes you would come by and take a look. I was there for voting. I personally thought that, as a voting place, it was pretty cramped. It looks great, but that was not the right function to hold in that place, in my opinion. But the other thing I want to point out is the fact that if you, as I do, work a ways away, I happen to work in Brattleboro, but a lot of people work in Brattleboro, Keene, Springfield, people even work in the Upper Valley, they commute up to and over in Lebanon, the hours of the town hall are from eight-thirty in the morning to four o'clock every day. Now, I leave Westminster at seven-thirty, and I return anywhere from four-thirty on, depending on how much work I have to do that day. So it's very difficult to get there. And I went to the Select Board last winter, and I pointed this out, and what they said to me was, well, nobody else has complained. So apparently, the fact that it's a, seems like a sensible idea doesn't really count. It has to do with the amount of people who complain. So if you work outside of the district too, I guess what I'm saying is, speak up, complain, because they're not going to do anything about it unless you do. Most of the towns, except for the town of Putney, either have early morning hours, the Rockingham Town Hall opens, I think, at seven-thirty at least one day a week, or most of the towns have later hours, and those aren't necessarily real late. I know Guilford's open till six o'clock one night a week. I think that would help out those of us who work away an awful lot. That's all I got to say about that.
Thanks. Adrian Major.
Thank you. I read with interest the Deerfield Valley Communications Union District Report about improving our internet. And as a last-miler, I'm living in a place where a quarter of a mile away, people can get direct Comcast fiber digital on either side of me. I'm wondering how this union district works to help people who are surrounded by fiber but don't have access to fiber themselves.
Thank you, Adrian. Any response or explanation from the Select Board? Any response or explanation from the Select Board?
No.
Okay. Okay, yes.
I'm Woodbridge Fuller. What with the chaos, what with the chaos left over by COVID, it became very hard to figure out who to vote for when we had select, when we were doing voting for Select Board. And I wondered whether, in the future, to allay that kind of situation, that the Select Board sponsor a forum in which all who are interested in being selectmen come forward and give them a chance to be seen by the public and for the public to see them. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Woodbridge. Charlotte Gifford.
I'd like to return for a moment to the nature of our discussion on the main motion to fund our town. I have no problem with the body voting down my amendment. If I had had further information, I would have voted it down also or withdrawn it. I would just like to say that I have attended town meetings since, I believe, a special meeting in the fall of 1985. I have yet to see any board before the citizens of Westminster either decline or be unable to answer a question, and I find that lamentable, and I hope that the board will take it seriously and say, when they are queried at town meeting, to at least look for the information and try to help us understand what they are asking us to do. I'll point out that I was supporting the board's intent, but it simply is not helpful for citizens not to be able to get the answers at town meeting. The point of town meeting is to come and hear the reports and be guided, because they are complex. We are ruling ourselves as citizens. We are not all experts. Our Select Board are also citizens and quasi-volunteers, but we do implore you to be ready with answers. Thank you.
Thank you, Charlotte. Barry.
Barry Schamas. I'm the Chair of the Planning Commission for the town of Westminster, and we are working on the town plan. And hopefully, we'll have some forums to discuss issues in the town plan, like housing and transportation and recreation and such. And I look forward to getting input from the town. Thank you.
Thank you, Barry. Mr. Major.
Stephen Major. I was just noting that this meeting of the town does not have a motion to authorize us as a town to borrow money to meet current expenses. Is that just not necessary for the town? Or is that an oversight in writing up the warning? Not, what you're saying is not necessary for the town? Great.
Okay. Select Board, any response to that? Jesse Haas.
All right. I know we, the Historical Society, just wants to express its gratitude for being now a line item in the budget, and that we didn't have to come before you for a special vote, but we know that, you know, we're still getting the support from the town, and we do appreciate that. We are planning to open our museums this year, and we are building toward a celebration of the 250th anniversary of the Westminster massacre in 2025, should we all live that long. So this would be a great time to join us. If you want to become a member, come up to me. I've got a few membership forms with me, and we'd love to have you be part of it. I think we're going to put together a nice celebration in a couple of years, and we've got plenty of time to plan.
Thank you, Jesse. Chuck Lawrence, Row Commission.
Hey, guys, going? So recently, I've run across some challenges with our building, and it is no longer adequate to house, our trucks are growing. As you know, the underpass down here gets one stuck in it at least once a month. So I put together a building committee to figure out, do we fix what we got, try to make it adequate, or do we build something new? And they tell me it's going to be a lot cheaper if we go new. So I looked at town garages from Mount Holly to Townsend that have been built in recent years, and the one that sticks out is one that Grafton built. I think it's going to, would better suit our needs, and they were gracious enough to give us their plans. And I'd like to have your permission to move forward, and it's going to, if I ordered a building today, it would take over a year just to get it in pieces, and the price isn't going to be any cheaper. They're telling me that, right now, to ask not to exceed $2 million to build a new highway garage that would suit the needs for another 80 years. So that's where I'm at.
Thank you, Chuck. And did I hear you asking for volunteers to be on a committee to investigate this?
No, I've already, I've got a committee right now starting. Certainly, anybody that wants to join it can, but I have engineers, I've got electricians, plumbers, builders, all commercial guys, so they know what they're doing. So that's where we're at.
Okay, so you're just giving us hints up that there's something coming down the mic?
Well, that's, I'm giving permission to move, I'm looking for permission to move forward, and I want to look at getting a bond for $2 million, not to exceed $2 million, so we can move forward on, what's that? Can't vote on it? It's got to be warned. Okay.
Yeah, any budgetary item has to be warned, so you need to get the Select Board to put it into the next annual warning.
Or what we're going to have, we're going to have to have a special town meeting, or we can kick it down the road for a year. Do you want me to put together a special town meeting? Or do you want me to start dumping money into the building we have and just go with what we got? I guess I'm looking for some direction. What do people want to do?
I'm going to make a suggestion that you bring it up before the Select Board and that body, together with yourself, make a decision about whether to have a special town meeting or to take it up next March. But it has to be a warned article, because it involves money. Sure. Thank you, Chuck. Mr. Extell.
I am Dan Extell, on the Historical Board, the Historical Society Board, with some exciting news that there will be a film crew here from the Vermont Historical Society this Friday at 10 o'clock in the morning. They will be filming for two episodes of this place in history, those era in about a month, and you can see them on YouTube. It'll be the courthouse and the Bradley Law Office. So don't be surprised if you see some people with cameras going up and down Main Street this Friday, and Kevin will be pointing at the Bradley flag on your house. It's wonderful to see the 15-star and 15-stripe flag flying there, and we're all proud. This is where that flag was conceived. So look for that, and don't be surprised to see the film crew this Friday.
Dan, any, Paul Bannock.
Yes, my name's Paul Bannock, and I'm here for two purposes. I wanted to take this opportunity to identify myself as your Chair of the ARPA Committee, and also to make a request. We need help. There were 12 to 16 original committee members that were appointed, and we are struggling to leave and attract or have attendance numbers much more than three or four. So that's okay. I understand the times we're in and how tight people's schedules are, but in communication forms, whether it be social media or emails, texts, we could really use the input from the other committee members out there that were originally assigned on. Or should we be looking for or asking for additional committee members? The Select Board has left us wide open. There's no prerequisites involved. It's just the interest of anyone that has ideas on where this money within the guidelines should go. We are advisory only to the Select Board, and we push up our ideas that we collect to them for them to decide whether to appropriate those funds out of the money that we've been given. There is some statistics available now, just recently. We've been a little rudderless up until just about a week ago. But it's because the guidelines changed, and there was a filing pending for April 30 that was critical to meet. And with the current conditions in the town hall, some people stepped up at the last 11th hour, it got us properly filed, and we have information that we can share now statistically. With that being said, to lead into Chuck's speech that he just gave you, I'd just like to mention that in that, ARPA money could be used towards that. And right now, because the guidelines that we're operating under the ARPA Committee says that anything that's normally, regularly, or expected to be spent by the town and paid for by the town is eligible for this ARPA money that we have. We have half the money in possession, I think, in the coffers, and there's another installment coming. So just to give you all an idea, what we're working with here as a town is about $880,000. That's rounded, but it's close. And in those monies was money given to the town of Westminster and monies that were given to the village of Westminster. The village committee met and decided that it was better served to surrender the village monies into the town's monies and just make it one, and not have two identifiable sources of money there. So thank you to the village board that decided that. Jim Mattow is part of that. I know he doesn't like being called out, but I also want to mention that I'm Chair, as a volunteer, but I wish he would take the position, because he is so much better embedded at it, and his experience trumps mine. But I'm in it to help the town, and Jim has been absolutely spectacular behind me. He's the one that has the time to spend in the town hall. I can't, but we, he makes regular communications with me daily lately. So back to the town garage, that's my second point for standing behind the mic. There was an exploratory group of us that assembled a few times, and all we did was discuss what would it take to stay in the town garage that we're in now? Should we stay in there? I don't know. That's for debate. But as you mentioned, trucks grow every year due to emissions. Their height gets higher and higher, and to keep trying to make the build and accept those vehicles, which they can't, and it can't accept all of them now, is a balloon construction process. We've had officials come down to tell us how noncompliant we are for ADA accessibility for just coming out of a pandemic. They didn't have enough room to assemble themselves as employees in a single room or have seminars or training. So there's a lot to talk about. I won't tie up a whole lot more time, but what we found out was it's going to take several hundred thousand dollars of improvements to stay within the state's respectable view and be compliant. And this goes everything from no insulation in the building to entrances, again, the meeting room sizes or training room sizes. Everything has to be done outside now. So water, sewer, the list is large. We do have quite a lot of property down there that a new facility could go on, so it's not that we'll be looking for land in addition to erecting a structure. And as a footnote to that, one of the things that, one of the people that met in these meetings was, if it was built, it's about an 80 by 100 is what we were working off for plans that Grafton gave us, which was a huge gift. It's going to be a drive-through construction, but it also, as pointed out, could be a new meeting space. So it would be large, it would be open, it would be ADA accessible, it would have a proper plumbing, and yes, this is a beautiful venue, but it does have its challenges. So we would always have, if something happened to the high school, where we couldn't meet there again in the future. That's just another thing we considered. So with that said, not to take up too much more of your Saturday, I just wanted to identify myself, speak to Chuck's point a little bit. I was involved in that exploratory group, and we have a lot of reasons that we could present for all of you further as to why this is being looked at or why we chose to assemble and bring it to you today. Can't vote on it, I understand that. It's a lot of money. Last point is, with the people we had involved, which are in excavation, electrician, plumbing, HVAC, truck drivers, laypeople, engineers, civil engineers, we're looking at probably $600,000 or $700,000 to put into that facility, even just to make it compliant and usable into an unforeseeable future at this point. When you're coming to the town and asking for $2 million, that's a huge pill, but is it smarter to spend the 1.2 or 1.3? And I'm mentioning that number instead of 2, because we decided that it was best to ask for a little bit more, because nobody ever gets upset when you give money back or don't use it. And it would be budgeted, it would be upfront, and if you didn't use it all, there wouldn't be any debate about it after it was complete. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Paul. Yes.
Judy Coven. Can you just, can you just say what is happening with the town manager's position?
Select Board has been queried about the town manager's position. Jason, would you care to answer?
Yeah. So prior arrangement with our town's attorney, we can't speak to any specifics, but we have an interim with Ally Bigwood, who is keeping things moving. We need to put it out and do a search and hire somebody, but we, as a board, wanted to figure out exactly what we wanted. The previous manager held a lot of hats and did a lot of things, and do we want to continue to have that? Or do we want to go back, I hate to say back, but to delegate a zoning person or a town manager? So when you lose one person with multiple hats, you lose a lot of stuff. So it definitely has to happen, and we just need to figure out what we want, but, or what the town wants. Maybe the town doesn't want to go back to that, but that's where we're at.
Thank you.
Thank you, Judy. Thank you, Jason. Kathy Kingston.
Hi. Yeah, that actually speaks to, I had two questions now then, or one comment. As a member of the Planning Commission for years, we had a, there was a separate, oh, okay. As a member of the Planning Commission for several years, when I came on, there was a separate zoning administrator, and I would just like to advocate for the town going back to that model, separate zoning administrator to town manager. That's my personal opinion and from some experience also. And the other, I have a question as to how you're going to proceed to find another Select Board member. What's your process going to be to get the interim Select Board member? Thank you.
So we have letters of interest at town hall at this time. As far as, I guess we just need to pick somebody off. It doesn't even need to be somebody on that list, I don't believe, but there's at least a handful of people interested, so once this meeting was behind us, that was on our to-do list for sure. And if there's anybody else interested, I mean, I guess you could get ahold of Kelly in the office with a letter or whatnot, or one of us, however you need to do it.
So are you going to be making a decision at a Select Board meeting? You'll be deciding amongst yourselves who the next member will be? Is that what you're saying?
It would have to, I would assume, have to be made at a meeting, yeah, an open meeting. Yeah.
Thank you. Thank you also, all the volunteers who have spoken up, like Paul just. There's a lot of people in this town who are giving a lot of their time and energy, and I'm grateful for that. That keeps the town and the community strong and connected, so thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kathy. Susan Harlow.
Yeah, this is just a point of information, having to do with the garage, I guess. So the Garage Fund had $63,000 in it, and I believe we voted at a meeting to spend that plus some extra to replace the fuel tanks, but they haven't been replaced, and I think Chuck said- But they haven't been replaced, and I think Chuck said because they're waiting to see if there's going to be a new garage. So is that money going to sit in the garage fund? It obviously hasn't added to the budget, like you said. Do you understand what I'm asking?
Yeah. It was added to fuel for the fuel tanks.
Oh, to replace the fuel tanks? You put it under fuel?
The fuel tanks were added to under fuel.
Ah, okay. And are the fuel tanks going to be replaced?
We can't—we couldn't send that information out to bid until we had an approved budget to go by.
Right.
And those numbers, even now, are probably not even close to realistic. Things have changed so much.
Right. I remember you said that. Right, and I think you also said that if you're going to have a new town garage, then why—
It shouldn't matter on the fuel tanks, Susan, because they'll be above ground.
You can move those.
I'm just going to interrupt for a second, just to make sure that—where Pauline is trying to take notes, we have to acknowledge—I, as moderator, need to acknowledge the different speakers rather than have a three-way discussion.
Okay, sorry.
Thank you, Susan, for your question.
I was just curious. Thank you.
Yeah. And I think, Jason, we got your response, and Chuck, do you have anything more to say?
I was just saying, we were waiting until the budget was approved before we could do anything, and now that we've waited, with everything the way it is now, the numbers are no good. So we've got to go back through the whole process and get three more budget numbers.
Yeah.
So that's where we're at.
And availability at this point, we don't even know if those tanks will be available right now.
As it was with the old numbers, they'd still be out over a year. So, exactly.
Hey, thank you. Any further discussion? Okay. Thank you—oh, I'm sorry. Brandon Pedego.
Brandon Pedego, just like to offer a public thank you to the Select Board for the hard work that you do. We appreciate all your effort.
Thank you, Brandon. And let's see, we've got a Select Board member at least who wants to say a word or two.
Yeah. A Select Board person has been here probably too long to some people, but I want to reach out and say that I've worked here as a Select Person for quite a few years with Toby, and her and I go back a long ways. We probably never agreed on very many things sometimes, and other times, we agreed on a lot. But I will say that I feel that I'm a better citizen in this town due to her input and how I get to view her points, and I really feel that the town's a better town because of Toby Young. So I want to thank her for all the things that she has given to us over the period of time. Thank you, Toby. And one last thing. So we always leave these meetings, and then we get confused, and numbers are always confusing. So next year, you're going to see the number that was 1,913785 will now be 1,968285. That would be the property tax with all the articles included, and I want to thank you very much.
I'm last to go.
Okay, thank you, Evan. Kevin Hughes.
Again, thank you. Thanks for all of you coming out. I also wanted to recognize Sue Harlow, who I got to serve with from my start to now, another tireless person. She does so many other things. She cares about the town, and I know that I'm a better participant in the town with her partnership and her friendship and her leadership. And I, too, also going four years with Toby Young, want to thank her very much for her leadership, her tutelage for me, especially on the certain of the rules and making sure that the rules are followed. Her time was a long time, and she was a constant, consistent advocate for representative government. And I wish her—we all wish her—the very best of everything in all her future endeavors, and thank her again for her service of so many years to our town and our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Kevin. Okay, and thank you, Select Board. We are lucky in this town to have a three-part town meeting, one of the increasingly rare towns now that we've gone back to being able to have a direct control over our school district. And so we will be dealing with that next. My suggestion is that we take—it's only three articles, because the school district is really just starting up in two months, but we have to approve the budget for that. My suggestion, however, is that we take a 15-minute break, we patronize Westminster Cares, and then come back at 12:45 and hear from the school board. So, yeah, and there's food at the school table, at the Westminster Cares table. We want to be able to make good use of that food and come back in short order. If that is agreeable to everyone, we'll take a momentary recess, 15-minute recess. Oh, I'm sorry. June?
Can I call a vote to see if anybody wants to? Because I'd rather just do the last three articles and then move on with the rest of our day.
Okay. June Strider has made a motion to continue on through the meeting. Is there a second to that motion? There is a second from Paul Bannock. All those in favor of continuing with the meeting, say aye. All those opposed, say nay. I'm going to say the nays have it, and we'll take a 15-minute break, but it'll be a short 15 minutes, and we'll come back at 12:45.